District 76 Board of Education meeting is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Here.
Kegel.
Hi.
Catherine Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Hi.
Tyler.
Here.
Griner.
Here.
Bailey.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone that came along tonight on this nice cold evening. All right, are there any audience comments on the action items on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to action items. We need a motion regarding the minutes, please.
Make the motion to approve the meeting minutes for the regular meeting dated December 12th, 2017.
Any questions? Comments? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Hi.
Kegel.
Hi.
Catherine Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Hi.
Tyler.
I'm staying.
Griner.
Hi.
Bailey.
All right, motion carried. Need a motion regarding the payments list.
The payment list dated December 21st, 2017 and January 11th, 2018.
Second. Any questions? Comments?
Short list of bills. Made a little list of the special aid today. Tuition out of district, $23,000 busing, 19 together, 42, 387 somewhere in that range. Tazwell Mason, right around $30,000. Tazwell Mason sends a lot of people in. I was watching someone come in today. He came in, he started working with a kid, he was a TO. I thought, man, I thought you were a dad. I told him, I said, you've been coming in all these mornings, every time I see you, I think you're walking a kid. He's a TO from the Mason, Tazwell Mason. Some of those bigger bills you're going to see special aid. Rest of them are pretty much in order for what we use.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Hi.
Kegel.
Hi.
Catherine Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Griner.
Hi.
Bailey.
All right, motion carried. Need a motion regarding Guerens and Associates.
I think the motion to accept the regulatory basis engagement with Guerens and Associates, LBD.
The amount not to exceed.
Oh, with the amount not to exceed $10,000.
$10,350. Oh, no, that's last year's. We got a dollar amount.
It wasn't in this one. The one we got in our packets on it.
It's in the packet, but I thought it wrote it in front.
No, it's not on the agreement. No, it's not on the agreement.
Next to the last page.
I didn't see it.
Not to exceed, was it a dollar amount?
Under the engagement administration, these and others, is that what you're talking about?
There's $10,595 in the first paragraph on page six. It's not to exceed $10,595.
Yeah. Last year it was.
I didn't see that.
Mrs. Cornwall got the number for me, last year's it was $10,350.
So this year it's $10,595.
Yeah, but we need the dollar amount in a motion so the public knows.
And this is for one year, correct?
Yes.
No one did it. Second.
Mrs. Reagan, second. Any questions or comments? They will have to say they've done a very nice job for us, though. The audit is very complete. Quick, very quick, yes. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Hi.
Kegel.
Catherine Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Griner.
Hi.
Bailey.
All right, motion carried. Need a motion regarding eighth grade group trip.
I need a motion for the eighth grade. Last trip to Six Flags for the 2017-2018 school year.
Thank you.
On May 11th, do you want that? That's a suggestive date.
I wouldn't put a necessary like date, in case it rains or.
Yeah.
I would pick that. Policy says that if they go X amount of miles, the board has to approve it, that's the only reason we aren't. Roll call, please.
Giddens.
Hi.
Kegel.
Hi.
Catherine Reagan.
Hi.
Val Reagan.
Hi.
Tyler.
Hi.
Griner.
Hi.
Bailey.
Nobody asked if we're, if the chaperones are covered, so I'm going to do that right now. You'll have plenty of chaperones?
Absolutely, sure.
Security will be covered, is what we didn't ask.
Aye, motion carried. All right, written communication. Oh, okay. I should read better than, okay. Reminder of upcoming events. We have a retreat on Saturday. Agenda is on your table. Everybody want to take a minute and look over that? We still have time to add anything, if anyone wants to. We'll put a little pressure on the principals. Short and long-term goals for each school. Please bring us a couple. In your opinion, that's all it has to be. Next board meeting is 26th?
30th.
30th? All right, presentations and suggestions by board members. Anyone have anything? Okay, well, I'm going to give you an update. We had an insurance meeting last week. We asked Unwin to please provide us with quotes for Blue Cross Blue Shield. Because at the time that we chose United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield was looking pretty good with the numbers, but they were in that indecision place with St. Francis, the OSF. So we just steered with the United Healthcare. So they gave us today tentative numbers. Keep in mind, it's not a phone. I'm going to pass these out. We have right now alternative four. You can see at the top, 1, 2, 3, it's the fourth one over. And if you look at the bottom numbers, right now we're paying $756,481.32. So you can bring the numbers across. But I'm going to warn you on that last one, we are not talking apples to apples. Nowhere close.
Okay, what do you mean the last one?
Okay, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield in the last column.
Okay.
Okay, that's the one that is significantly less, yes.
Because they don't cover as much.
Well, your family is $9,000.
There you go.
Yeah, that's like $10,500.
Yeah.
But don't thought that you'd get like, so hit those because she was actually higher.
Uh, not higher, but we're not getting the coverage. Our employees are not getting the coverage.
They're going to their odd down.
Oh, okay.
Get the next one down that's similar.
Yeah, your out-of-pocket is just huge, it's $4,500 compared to $10,500 for family.
Well, your out-of-pocket max was deductible. Look at that, your family is $10,500.
And it's 45 now.
Holy crap, then your family is $21,000.
Yeah.
But what is the premium?
Kelly and I sat and went over it. Premiums are less.
Did you compare the next column to what we have now?
I did.
Oh, the premiums are only $50 less for the other.
$781,000 or, give me which total, which column?
The $781,000. Which seems more similar to what we have now.
Second from the end.
Mm-hmm. Which costs the districts about $26,000 more. And then you've got to start the co-pays on the prescription. See the difference? Zero to 10, 50 to 100, then it jumps to 150 to 250, and then two times the co-pay for a mail-in. And what scares me is it's not a phone bid. This is only a preliminary.
For next year.
So it could go, no. This is changing as of March 1st. They told us that we could, we were able to look into this and the union and the administration met.
Insurance committee.
Insurance, yeah, insurance committee met and wanted to give it a chance. And it has went up since November when they gave us the first quote. We pulled old ones out and it has went up since then. But there again, it wasn't exactly apples to apples.
So we're in United Healthcare right now?
Yes. Alternative four.
Which is way better than the other plans. And it's not that much more expensive premium.
But we've heard so many complaints from our staff as far as the prescriptions, especially prescriptions.
Well, the $10,35 and $70.
Well, they're going, it's not so much that, they're going to pick them up and no warning. They paid $10 last month and they're paying 80 this month or 50 this month.
Because their tenant is out of network, I wonder? There's no wonder the formulary?
Yeah, the formulary is the whole key.
Right, so they changed the formulary without telling them?
They're supposed to let them know 30 days in advance, it's not happening now. So they thought that maybe Blue Cross Blue Shield would be better, but there's no guarantees.
The thing is, the bad part about Blue Cross Blue Shield, it looks like you're going to pay a whole heck of a lot more.
Well, what we finally discovered, because we kept seeing the premiums are lower, but yet the bottom line is more expensive. Look under the, on the premium. Go down to the employee and that's their part. Then go to employee and spouse. Look how that jumps. It's like you're being, yeah.
It's like double almost.
Uh-huh. But then the employee and child, it comes back down. So it's like you're being targeted, well, a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, it is a little bit, but not a lot.
I can go back to her and ask for something else.
Thing is, if you don't use your insurance, lesser premium would be best, but you may still not know you're going to get sick.
You don't, you really don't.
And then you have to pay like this $10,000 out-of-pocket.
I was really disappointed on the numbers.
People afford that, I mean, really $10,000 out-of-pocket?
So I just wanted to share with the board, we'll meet with the insurance company again and I don't want to do anything right now, but maybe I'll get back to them.
But one we have is the alternate four.
Yes, that is what we currently have now. And so you can see, go back to the 11, well, 16 or 17. They jump like in their deductible, 500 to 1,500. Because in 17 it was $966,000. That was the revised. So I just wanted everyone to be on board with what I got. And I can go back to her and ask if she can give us a firm number if we're interested.
What about alternate one? I mean, the first one, we didn't have here one, you know, the first column.
No, I'm looking at it that way. What was the reason you didn't pick that?
Yeah.
Cost for one thing.
Well, it was, it looks like it's cheaper.
Look at the cost, no.
That's 2016.
That was in 16.
Oh.
Oh.
No wonder. I liked that one.
It seemed like a good, like it's the same thing.
No, no.
I liked that one.
That was in 16.
Exactly.
So the revised one, the 17, was the next one.
That's a lot more.
That's a huge jump.
And the alternate one is along that way you're on.
Right, correct. Because we couldn't afford that one.
It is, yeah.
Right. And neither could our employees, I mean, look at the premium.
So like it's employees' expense, $2,000.
Yeah. So there was no way. So this is what we ended up with. Any suggestions?
Can we hand that?
I'll go back to the insurance committee, but it doesn't look like it's a benefit to anybody.
Uh-uh. No. I mean, we could save a lot of money, but it's not right to dump this on our employees like this, I mean.
Save a lot of money to go to the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
To the last one, the last one, that's not fair, you know, that's terrible.
$10,000 out-of-pocket, that's just, you know.
Then they were running to deductible issue. Where I've already used some of the insurance before you switch over. Now you've got to start all over from scratch.
They said that that would be.
Carried over.
Carried over, right, yeah.
To a different insurance company?
Yes.
They'll accept deductible, okay.
Yeah, but the out-of-pocket is so huge.
Yeah, it's the out-of-pocket.
Even the deductible for, is, you know, 1,500 and 4,500 before it kicks in, no.
Right.
It's not right.
All right. So that's all I had.
If you make a mistake, you do the out-of-network and it's nine grand.
Or go in and work and find out.
Insurance is not what used to be regardless.
Yeah.
I went into that, problem with insurance in hospitals.
All right, do we have any more presentations or?
The only nice part about that one was the prescriptions.
Savannah, you missed last board meeting. Can you think of something that stood out in Chicago? Just short and sweet.
I don't remember.
I'm sure you got something.
I don't, I don't remember. I'll say I've got my notes.
I mean, each one of us kind of went around the table and tried to pick just one thing. And I mean, sometimes there's several and sometimes you go and you think you didn't learn anything and five months later something comes up and you think, I did that in Chicago, so.
Okay. I think you answered my question. My motion came out, so it.
All right, reports from the administration. Mr. Wiston?
Missed you guys, been since December 12th, since we've met. Had a nice week before we went on break. The concerts were great, always before those. Monday and Wednesday we were at La Salle. Tuesday we got to see the Parkview Band, end of the week. Portable planetarium, portable planetarium. They talked about that and Steve's, all his kids moved to Warrior Way Skate Trip, what it's all. So it's been a week in Tennessee. People down there thought we'd be, we got some cold weather, 35, 40 degrees, that's what you guys know what you're talking about. I was glad to be away from the cold for a week, came back. Told my wife, said, you don't have to get that driveway swept off pretty quick. Sure enough, we go and I said, try it. Got halfway up the drive and I said, okay, that's far she's going. I got my shovel out and welcomed back to Illinois. Nine inches or eight inches of snow on the driveway. Week after that, I spent four, the five days here, Thursday I was sick, I was here Monday through Friday, not a lot going on. That's about it for that. Got back to school, haven't had a snow day yet, had one. I was doing 10 o'clock, I'm in bed, sleeping. Brad did it, thank goodness, he called me, warned me that East Gloria Elementary's out, he was out. I probably should be the same, I did follow. First time calling off school, I'll do better next time. I got a kick out of one of our elementary kids. He was telling his parents that he had milk day off on Monday. It was milk day, we were going to have a day off for milk day. MLK, Martin Luther King. That's kind of how, how he said it was really kind of neat. Board meeting, got a retreat Saturday, so I'll keep it short. I'll turn it over to the principals, if they miss anything, I'll come back.
Okay, who's turn is it? I always guess wrong.
First meeting in a month.
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow, that's not a lot to keep it.
But the last couple of months we had, we never had one meeting.
All right, Mr. McCormick?
Actually, did you go to elementary school before you go to junior? As Mr. Wiston alluded to, the week before break was Space Week. Where we had portable planetarium from Lakeview at the end of the week, had a few board members come in and check it out. I sat through one of the presentations in there. Mrs. Radovich got in there and got down on the floor.
I did?
And got back up again, we joked about that together. It was really pretty neat, neat experience. They were very good to work with and would like to have them back next year because they have a lot of different presentations so we can vary that every year.
I wanted to come back.
Also that week, third grade traveled to Morningside to do a little caroling for the seniors that come in and visit them monthly, their adopted grandparents, and teachers came back and said it was a very positive experience. It's their very nice job and were very well received by the residents there. Parents Club and teachers are working on planning the annual chili supper Friday, February 23rd. It's about the usual date it is, give or take, but Parents Club liked the arrangement last year. Teachers like getting a little bit of money so that they can have things like the portable planetarium come in and it works well as a cooperative relationship. Speaking of Parents Club, McDonald's night tomorrow night, we're peak in 4:30 to 7:30. And the only other thing I have on my list here is I do have enough teachers to start tutoring. We will be doing that end of the month. Got one teacher per grade level plus some subs, so we'll be getting some kids some additional help. And invitations for that will be going out this week.
Good.
Welcome.
Any questions?
What was the date on that?
February 23rd.
Hope everyone had a great holiday break. Cold outside, warm inside. Tenure Health Life Safety Report, in the, in my administrative report, I put an update for the Health Life Safety Report. We had a holiday warrior way celebration. Mrs. Weaver did back out on a race that we did go ahead and hold the event. We had about 204 students attended the day at Planet X and feedback from the students was really positive. Just a great day to get the students out of the building, have some fun, get a little bit of excessive energy off and come back and dismiss for the day, so the skating trip was a lot of fun. Holiday break, brief maintenance report, we had a little bit of a hiccup with our heating system in the cafeteria. Our HVAC people did come out. On the second day that the technician come out, he was able to remedy the situation. And it's actually the central unit that's over the cafeteria. The initial report, Mr. Wiston just about fell out of his chair on the initial report, but the initial report came back that we may have to replace the whole unit. Not a good thing. And we got that report on a Thursday, I think, prior to getting ready to have students back on the following Tuesday. So long story short, they sent the second technician out, they were able to remedy the unit. We do have heat that's flowing into the cafeteria. The HVAC people did communicate that we should probably put this unit on the future radar down the road, so to speak. We thought that that unit may be approximately 15 years of age, maybe a few years, I don't know. That, we thought it's about 15 years of age. Yes, yes. It's working fine, it's a big unit, it's working fine.
From the beginning. We've had trouble with that.
Have you?
Mostly the air conditioning part.
Okay. It's up and running now, providing heat, but they said down the road, it's just something you want to, you may want to be aware of just so that it doesn't catch us by surprise, so.
Any idea?
That initial estimate came in around $7,000, $6,600.
Maybe more.
I did too.
$6,600, I believe.
How long does a unit normally last? I mean, the first hole, twice a lot longer.
The unit, the unit that's on top of the roof right now, he had said approximately 15 years. And we're at 15 years, and I'm sure that's based upon your climate, the climate of the area, how often the unit's kicking on and off, and there's, I'm not an expert in HVAC, but there's, I'm sure there's a lot of factors, but the year or the life of that unit is what the technician was concerned about. So running fine right now, the second technician was able to get us up and running, so it's just something that gets food for thought.
Just FYI, before we replace that, get a different company out here, give us an estimate. If it doesn't need to be large or maybe, because we have a lot of trouble with. Okay, just in case it goes out, because I know that's going to be an emergency decision, you aren't going to wait for a board meeting, so look for some, or you get a different company and get some quotes.
Sure. Okay.
Estimates, estimates is the correct word.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Assessment, right now, we are conducting our second MAP assessment. We started the assessment last week, January the 11th, and we're scheduled to conclude on January the 19th. Student Council last week attended a teen conference. Mrs. Strasser is the sponsor from the student council. We have a former Robine student, Taylor Heisman. She is a senior East Curor High School. They have a, East Curor High School has a cadet program. Taylor had communicated that she wants to do her cadet. She is interested in being a teacher and she wanted to do her, complete her practicum at Parkview School. So Taylor started after, when we got back from the holiday break. And actually, I saw Taylor today, asked her how her experience is going. I asked Taylor specifically, are you surprised, are your eyes a little bit open now that you're actually in the classroom? She said, hey, I'm enjoying it. So she's doing a practicum with Mrs. Park at the eighth grade level in Language Arts. So she's really enjoying her experience so far. DARE program, the DARE program did, the instruction of that program concluded prior to the holiday break, but there is a graduation schedule on January the 25th at 7:00 in the gym. Everyone's invited to attend. Our fifth grade students who receive the instruction will be able to receive a special acknowledgement for completing that program and cookies and punch will be provided as well. That is on January 25th at 7:00 PM. Yearbook sales, very briefly, talked about yearbooks last week. Mrs. Millson's our new sponsor, we're sitting down and we reviewed what we had talked about last fall. And again, what we're trying to get, we're trying to get past the having a deficit account balance in the yearbook fund. And the area that's starting this a little bit with the previous yearbook provider was they had that mandatory minimum order that we were obligated to actually purchase. We had to purchase so many yearbooks and we couldn't sell that many, bottom line. So the new provider, Jostons, they're allowing us to order, to place an order based upon what we really need to order. So we're looking forward to that and hopefully we have a good experience with yearbook sales this year. And Mr. McCormick and Mr. Wiston and I, we've been working with the, our folks who teach ELA. We'll have a third ELA committee on January the 26th, that's up and coming. That's actually next week. So we hope we have a good committee meeting for ELA. Mr., did we, did we want to talk about lighting at all tonight or no?
Yeah.
Yes?
I've got a sheet I can hand out.
Okay, okay. The gentleman came in over the break and they installed the lighting in the conference room. Lighting, the lighting does look really nice. I'm not just saying this, but it makes the room look newer, so to speak. It makes, it's just a lot of nice light. So if you haven't had a chance and you'd like to go view the lighting, please feel free to do so at your convenience. After the lights were actually installed, the gentleman contacted us recently and all of those ceilings, that original proposal that was provided was based upon some of the ceilings being concrete ceilings and some of the, some of the ceilings being tile ceilings. So what's happened is, is the gentleman who provided the first proposal, they have adjusted the proposal to more accurately cover actually proposing installing the lighting in the concrete ceilings. Because what happened is, once they started installing in the concrete in the conference room, that they determined that that's more labor intensive, takes more work than what it would to simply install the lighting on the tile. So the tile, so before you is the updated proposal. The bottom line is actually less expensive than what was originally proposed. Now, the light fixtures have changed a little bit.
The room we have completed down there now, they have, in the middle, they have a row of four, two-by-two lights. And they're spaced out on the ends of the road, closest to the road will have three. The road closest to the hallway will have three, so you need three, four, three. Basically what they're doing is they're going away from the two-by-two light. Basically, what they're doing is they're going away from the two by two light. After doing this one room, they thought it would be easier to put four footers out there, LEDs. Uh I said, is that more light or less light? A little more light. It'll be a little more light than the two by two. So if you go in that, if you want to go in a room down there, go in the conference room across from the office. The two by two lights are out, four down the middle, three on each side. They want to do that with four footers. LED lights. I think the cost is about the same for the lights. I think Mr. Johnson made a good point. The two by twos were harder to put up because they were drilled in the concrete. And they thought these lights would be a little easier to put up. Same same amount of lighting, a little more.
Fewer, less drilling.
Bigger lights, less drilling.
The payback, the payback period, I have the the original proposal in front of me and I'm comparing that to the one, the the updated, the adjusted proposal. Payback is the same, 2.6 years. Actually, the rebate, the gentleman did communicate that the rebate on on these new newer, not newer, different types of lights, they were talking about tonight. They were actually able to get a better rebate from Amarin on these lights, and that is actually reflected in the overall net cost. On the previous proposal, the net cost came in after the rebate came in at twenty-two one twelve. And then on the uh the up, the adjusted proposal, uh the net cost after the rebate came in at twenty-six sixty-seven. Which is a little bit uh cheaper, so to speak, than than the original proposal.
Okay, so what's the size on the one that's the quantity three seventy-seven? Is that the, they're now four by four?
Say that again, three seventy-seven? That's your four footers.
It's not four by four.
Is it four by four or by two?
Four by two.
So they're the same as the other ones then?
Uh I don't think they're four foot by two, Steve. I think they're a long, skinny. I have a, I don't have a copy of them. I do have.
Just look at this ceiling. There's a two by two.
Two by two.
I filed, decided there's a two by four. So when you walk in buildings, you used to see an light fixture that takes up two spots. That's what they're talking about.
You're talking about the three seventy-seven quantity? One by, those are one by fours.
That's why I'm confused. The bottom one says two by four.
Yeah, that is right.
The quantity of three seventy-seven doesn't say how big.
I believe they're one by four.
One by four?
I believe so. Twelve inches, I believe.
Could be.
I don't know where I've seen those narrow lights. Not the new style, I've seen the narrow one by, it's like two tubes. In the old boughs, there's two tubes running down, but they don't take up the entire tile.
Since these are already built, they're gonna be two door divided.
No, it's gonna be an entire. The entire panel lights in them instead of a wall.
Right, it's the same as what we, they brought in and showed us, just a different dimension, but.
We did have another bid uh from another company and I've got that, it's much more detailed. But it was gonna be after the re, Amarin rebate of twenty-two thousand, was gonna cost us thirty-seven, a lot more than thirty-seven.
The bid was more detailed?
Just a lot of papers. I don't know if it was any better, but it definitely.
I was just wondering if it didn't have the smaller ones, the two by twos?
It didn't have, it did not, did not have two by twos. He said they would have been more expensive in his eyes. He said, no, I can't give you a bid on that. He said, I'm giving you the best one, I think, and it was the four footers.
It's four footers like this one.
Comments before I express mine?
If you want to go see the lights down, they look nice, I mean they're.
I would like to go see them, but I would also like to get CTS in here, get a bid. I don't care if they want to give us one by fours, two by fours, I don't really care, whatever they think is needed. And I would like for you to have Shelley figure out the cost of light bulbs that we are spending. I keep hearing how much. They're costing us and ballast, yeah. She should be able to go back in the files and give us an estimate of what are we spending now? That way I can justify exactly, because I have no idea the cost of a light bulb. We're not seeing it when we approve bills individually, you know, so. Yes, Mrs. Reagan.
And what's it, these light bulbs, like a fifteen year bulb or something like that?
They say fifteen.
Which over time, it's gonna save some money, but.
The replacement for the bulb might be expensive too.
You just gotta.
It's not gonna.
You just set it in. I asked that when we.
So it would be like seventy dollars or whatever it is at that time.
And look at the labor you're gonna save by not having.
Yeah.
People replace them.
That's true.
Well, that's what they were saying is, kind of what they were trying to figure out.
I think you'll save more in that than you actually will the the Amarin, you know, savings.
Don't our janitors change those though?
Oh, the cost of the bulb, yeah, that's what I'm wanting to find out, what that is. Then if we can get another estimate before the thirtieth board meeting, with us back on with the other estimate and the cost that we're doing now for the light bulbs, it might be good, but then everybody else has some input.
I assume this, the two by fours then must still be in the cafeteria, in the drop ceiling areas?
Two by four, that is correct. That second line you have there, not the hallway.
No, because your your hallway's concrete. Anywhere there's a drop ceiling, the cafeteria, I think maybe.
The hallway between the kitchen.
Oh, the new hallway.
The library.
Right.
Yeah, the two, the two by fours go in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yes.
Except the gym.
Everything except for the gym. I don't think.
Not that much money when you start a fight.
We could talk about it next time, but I don't think we're gonna get this again. I don't. I don't think they're gonna make a lot of money on this audit. That's what they're.
I'm sure, but I just want to justify it to myself, nothing else. Get somebody else in here, get a second estimate.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they would put in each room.
That's why I'm saying, don't compare what they're gonna put in.
Right.
See what they're recommending.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right, just just make sure we're doing the right thing.
Right.
And if I could simply ask if there's any big questions or, I shouldn't say big que, any questions about this proposal? If you could just shoot an email to Mr. Winston or myself, that way we can send that to this group and get a get a response for you. That way, if there's anything out there lingering, we can try to cover that.
Just verify the size. We're all guessing one by four, maybe verify the size.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
And didn't he say a different switch too, a light switch? He was talking about switches last time. So I thought.
The automatic shut off.
Yeah, the automatic shut off in the switches, so I just want to make sure that that was included in this as well and whoever else.
Okay.
Doesn't say that, but.
Right, so.
So it was a motion activated switch, is that what you're?
Yes, because he said they're not going off the light, that way the lights will go, they will be off hopefully.
All right, well, as long as you're writing down, Mr. Johnson, how many of these one by four fixtures will be in each classroom? And what the configuration is?
He thought he put four, four down the middle, three on the side, so there would be four and six.
Okay, I thought you were saying that's what they did in the conference room.
They did, but they do the, but they were, they're two by twos, remember, they're more spaced out. These are gonna be closer together.
Go down the middle and three on the side.
That is for sure.
Well, I was, but you know, I think before he told us they were gonna go from nine to seven, we were talking to him that for that day, that he talked about maybe decreasing it. I don't know.
I got confused.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add one last thing, sure, this will be short. Uh snow removal with the new company this year, Woods Lawn Care. I did have them out over Tressusbury. I'm gonna just say it this way, I told them I want to make sure that our parking lots are square, not rounded. They were rounded in a lot of places, that means our parking spaces weren't all there, and I said, you know, the edge of this school, straight across. It was ten feet out, it was just everywhere. I said, want it squared off, and I think they did a better job. They were here at six o'clock last night. I did call them, um, did call them on whatever day it was and said, hey, we don't have school on Monday, it could have been Sunday night, I said, there's no hurry. I I said that because I thought we'd get a half inch of snow and we wouldn't have to do it. But we got two and a half inches, so he said, I'm still, we did it. They started at six o'clock and I think they did a lot better job the first time. But it's hard, it's a hard, they had a six inch snow and they came up and they said, matter of fact, I even drove up on a curve, but yeah, I drove up on a curve, I did look there, but with all the snow being younger, I think they're a good group.
There's a learning curve, you know, they do it a few times, they'll get it.
That's all I had.
Okay, so are our janitors shoveling the sidewalks, are they? I guess they are because it's.
Certain ones, uh the big, I know the uh the one back here between our board office and the building. They do not do, they do not do the sidewalk that comes from our building down. But they do the major sidewalk, the big sidewalk in front of the school, the one by the buses.
If it's more than a half inch or whatever it is.
Inch, inch and a half, two inches.
Yeah, then you have the company do it, right? And we need to put that in the contract next time, so we don't get in trouble.
Wait, we did put it in the contract.
Is it in the contract?
Yeah.
No, it's not in the union contract.
What we talked about.
Union contract.
Oh, I thought it was.
Not snow removal, yes it is.
I thought we put it in the snow removal contract.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, we did.
All right, building and grounds. Tenure life safety study report, I think the principals are keeping us updated as to what's being done so far and where you're, how much further we've gotta go. How they need.
Is there anybody on the agenda that maybe can just maybe chat about some of this stuff?
Steve, on his report, you got what's known as.
Yes. I think it's covered.
Yeah, it's gold.
Yeah, actually it could be. That's a gold.
It's a quality as it is.
Okay, but remind me. All right, uh nothing else under building and grounds? Does telephones come come under building and grounds?
No, it's under technology.
All right, technology, remind me. All right, policy. No, policy. Mr. Giddens, it's all yours.
No, we did meet uh last Tuesday and went through two complete packets. There was still some stuff we need probably heads up to the board and have them thinking about it when we go to do our first reading. Part of policy, I think it was five forty, is in this packet. There were some other just suggestions from other schools. You may have different policy numbers, but it talks about. Uh, lack of better words, because I'm not that familiar with GoFundMe, you know, I know what it's about and everything else, but all the technical and things like that. And five forty kind of covers it already.
Ours doesn't. Our current policy doesn't.
And I'm getting ready to pass out five or eight eighty and it gets in, which is our current policy too, which gets into greater detail. Did you keep one? But I mean, I'm not saying we're voting, this is the current policy, but if we want to go in there and tweak this or as things start picking up and going, maybe find out is there anything causing problems and then tweak it at that time? That because right, you know, they have to come up with a plan and everything else we get approved by the superintendent. That's in current policy. Now, those other policies that you'd seen had some others and they, administration can use those as guidelines and says, hey, this might be working. You know, policy is kind, is something that always changes. You know, we go along with press and then, you know, we modify our.
But Randy, this eight point eight oh is gifts to the district. Once they do say a GoFundMe, then yes, it becomes a gift to the district. But what they're asking for is can they solicit, and that's where.
And that's in.
Five point one four oh, and that's what we need to address specifically.
Right, and it says they shall not solicit donations or sales, nor shall they be solicited for donations or sales on school grounds without prior approval superintendent. I guess the school grounds is, now we're talking about presented online.
Sure.
And then that's where we seem where other schools.
Yeah, but see, like eight eighty, Val pointed out, you can do it without a stated purpose. The gun, the GoFundMe has to have a stated purpose and they request a certain amount. It's not open ended usually.
Right.
That's when it becomes a gift to the district.
This is to solicit.
This, right, right. There's, it's two different things. Yes, needs to qualify under eight eighty, because if they do a GoFundMe and it's for the name of the school, it's belongs to the school at that point. Yes, I get that. But we, they need some clear direction on when they can fundraise, when they can solicit.
My cousin does this at Parkview School all the time.
Right, and it's more of a.
Right, I don't have a problem with with the staff doing it, but I just think we need some guidelines. Like, the the one thing that I didn't even think of when I read through these is that they said to have an account set up just for that, and it has to be run through the school. So, I mean, my suggestion would be put on the activity rep, uh activity report, but. Somebody's gotta keep track of that money coming in and what it goes to.
That's true.
And they said, don't let the staff put the GoFundMe in their name, it has to be in the school name.
And that needs to be clarified to give them direction.
Since press has not come down with a policy, all these schools are making their own, so I just went out and found what I could and you figure they they fell into the potholes, that's why they've done.
Right, and Mrs. Starman sent us something to try to help with this, because this came up in Labor Management.
Can you clarify for me one right now, say a look at it?
Right ahead.
No, your cousin, she works for private school.
No, she works for public school. She's a down low.
So they're asking for some guidance.
Yes, you'll figure that out.
Yeah, I'm gonna see how she can actually set up.
You see, and I don't, where I, when I hear GoFundMe and this other one, it's like. How do we do the guidelines? Because this is open range, it could be a lot of things. And that's where, if they come up with a proposal and then tweak that proposal, you know, go back and, okay, how much are you trying to raise and what for? What if you exceed that amount? You know, all of a sudden it comes in so fast, so you get flash money and that. What is, how are you distributing that or whatever? But if you don't reach your goals, will you continue on or, you know, because I'm looking at.
That was addressed in here somewhere.
Right, there's another one that's also addressed in here I like too, because it says you have to get prior approval depending on the department, like technology, you just don't have a bunch of technology there.
Yes.
Right here, she's got it for art donors choose dot org, high springs projects.
Okay, while you're doing that, Randy, on the one from New Hanover County, under number three. The principals need to be familiar with the terms, all or nothing, like if you don't reach your goal, then how that's handled, and the other one is keep it all regardless if you reach your goal or not.
And and everything's pre-approved through the principal, it says, I mean, if you put it on that one.
But who determines this all or nothing? Who determines those two goals? When I was reading it, I was like.
The principal.
The principal is gonna have to.
It's the principal, it's not the, what, people run a website?
No, no.
Okay.
I mean. According to the policy of the school, it's the principal who has to decide if it's all or nothing.
The principal decides.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, it does say platform terms.
Right.
So some of them may.
Because I thought, like, on GoFundMe or something, you put like all or nothing, and if your goal is reached, then you get the donation, and then if not, you don't.
The donation.
But I feel like this could also be stating that, like, when the staffer, employee, or teacher comes to the principal, they're like, okay, well, you need to set it up as a keep it all or all or nothing.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, on this particular one, she's asking for textbooks or for books, reading books. And the goal is met. She describes what she needs for students. Uh my school is currently about seventy-five percent poverty and many students are considered at risk. Somewhere we need to keep it in a positive light.
Yeah, I'd put that in the one.
And and there's nothing wrong with this.
Right, no.
That is factual and that's fine.
Yeah, we're describing the district only, factual information and a positive approach will be allowed, because in the past, I've seen administrators write grants for this district that made us look worse than pond scum, so it's good. And we don't need that out there. I mean, state was what reality is, but don't take the district down with it.
Again, I have no idea, this was approved through the superintendent, through the board, through.
Or if they have any guidance.
Can you contact her and see if they have policy on it, Randy?
I will, I will.
It'd be interesting.
But that's a local, you know, that's a school, I'm taking.
Okay, I don't know if you wanted to say.
I could check then, their policies are all in one.
It just may be a procedure.
Okay.
That's good.
All right.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna work on this and bring it back next meeting, Savannah? She's at Allison, of course.
Over the next policy meeting? Or the next board meeting?
Yeah.
Do that and then discuss it?
At the next board meeting. That's the reason why I brought this policy along to pass around.
Because one goes into the other.
Right.
But you know, I know that we've been concerned before about certain things going out for donations and everybody's hitting everybody for donations.
Exactly.
Something like that goes out to all the friends, which is not just her friends here in town, it is to everyone she knows. So it could be, you know, hundreds of people that aren't even here in this area.
I guess that goes to people she doesn't know too.
Right.
Dot org.
Which I'm saying, it goes everywhere, so I mean, people could be, you know, including her funds, and once it's met, doesn't matter if there's people around here or not, because it's over.
Something else we discussed at that meeting too is, in my opinion, it should not go on Parkview's Facebook page or LaSalle's Facebook page for that reason, because then it's targeting our parents again. So if they wanna do it, you know, that's just my opinion though. If they wanna put it on their own Facebook page.
From what we're all thinking.
The dot org.
The positive light, there needs to be some kind of control, every teacher should not go out at the same time and need something.
Right, are you going to limit the amount of people that do GoFundMe a year?
You know, you're gonna have forty or fifty out there.
Or if they do, if they need to do it personally through their own stuff.
Staggered.
Right, staggered.
Like you said, not put it out on.
Local.
Local stuff.
Limited one a year or something.
Yeah.
Well, and it would be nice, depending what it is, to see if they can ask the principal superintendent, can they have the money for it?
But also, what are they?
Does everything need to be a GoFundMe?
Right.
You know, if we need, say books, reading books, certain like novels, maybe we could just pay for them.
But also, the one question I have in here, instead of individual teachers, I was looking at a grade level. The teachers in that grade level get together and do whatever project for that grade level. That way you don't have competing teachers at the same grade.
That's a very good idea.
I would love that, should be looked at as something that, you know, that we should be maybe there by, because I think a lot of places do this as a fundraising campaign to let other groups help.
Right.
I don't think it should be, I don't think it should be looked at as, you know, that we're begging or so.
No, but if you need books that's only maybe seventy dollars, maybe we could just pay for that, and if someone needs something that's five hundred dollars, do that.
That we don't have the money for.
Or the series.
Yeah, you know, if we have the money for it, buy it, if we, you know, if it's like astronomical, you know, like a lot more money, I understand that.
The experts, but I'm sure. The district should still be responsible for.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think what she showed me, there were only four donors on that, so I think it was something above and beyond what their budget could handle, so it was something special maybe.
And maybe her students wanted a little mini library in their room and, you know, just like contribute a few books, so that's great.
Yeah, but I have, so is this only for if they're using like the name LaSalle Creek or District Seventy-Six? So say, what if a teacher gets online and goes, like doesn't say what school it's for, doesn't say anything and says, I want to raise money for new, I don't know, accessories for my reading corner in my room, but doesn't say the school district, use our mascot, disclose location or anything, do we have control over that? Cause I don't think we would.
Don't see how we could.
Cause then it would just be a donation to them, which would be like a personal donation.
It's theirs.
Okay.
It's theirs, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that now.
Then the rooms get cluttered up and.
Well, it could be for something else that you say, okay, it's just for books.
That's just my example.
I don't know what the requirements are from these.
I agree there.
Sites though, so they may require an EIN number or a school name. Mr. McCormick, do you have any clue how those work?
Cause I think they're pretty lax, cause.
Some of the questions you're getting into, I don't know, like the EIN number, et cetera. But based on some of the things I've seen, people crowdfund in general, I don't think so, I think it's pretty loose.
Yeah.
Yeah, did someone do it for potato salad?
Yes, you get some people doing it for ridiculous things.
Yeah.
I never heard of crowdfunding.
Oh, yeah, cause a lot of my.
I think crowdfunding is the generic term for getting a crowd of people you might not even know to fund a project, whether it be through one of the different websites that does it.
And they do take a percentage, right?
I believe so.
Why, I know that.
Don't you wish you would've come up with that?
I wish I would've come up with pay for your tuition, but hey.
Bet you're right.
Oh, not too late.
That money has got to be in line for something.
That was their suggestion, was have it made out to the school, it would go right to, I mean, the checks would have to be made out.
To the school.
To the school.
Or the district.
Right.
Oh. Okay, work on the policy for us if you would, Policy Committee do that. Am I hearing anything else from the board members that wants what they want in it or don't?
My name with tuition.
Yeah.
She's almost gone now.
I know.
She should've asked four years ago.
I know.
All right. Technology.
Now you can ask your phone question.
I don't wanna ask.
Mr. Wilson has already answered, I don't have an answer.
Okay, well, we're looking into, Jay is looking into the phone systems for us, and I think we all got an email from a phone person. I'll just throw it back to him, I wouldn't answer.
We did the email.
Took the whole board, yeah.
Took the whole board. I don't, and I don't remember who it was from. But they, they knew we were looking into it, so I figured Mr. Wendellin was making his phone calls, his inquiry, and then we get the email.
So do you wanna set a meeting when Jay gets to a certain point that we can?
I'm not sure what we're doing, because I know we're, would they be for the next two years through contract?
I thought we just signed it until.
But he is looking into something, cause ours is really old.
Right, so if we look into it now, we'll be prepared when the contract comes out.
All right, parent advisory.
I haven't done anything, um, to be honest, and we'll, we'll probably be in February, I talked to a couple of parents and I have talked to Mr. McCormick and Steve, looking on it.
In the policy packets this time, and we'll get them in your next thing, there is a checklist. A checklist of everything that needs to go into that invoice, so, yeah.
So we said it in February?
Yeah, we should have it next meeting for the first reading, no.
No, I think that was in.
In February.
An AP or an exhibit though, I think.
Right, so it would be in February when she gets, if you want it before then, it was Stephanie and.
I'll send out the press, if you haven't logged into your press, look them up, I'll just email a copy of all.
I don't know if they want everything, do you?
Well, I mean, it has everything, we're gonna be discussing it next meeting.
Well, it's up to them now.
With all the footnotes.
Okay.
From press, not from ours.
Food service, everything's going well, we have food, kids are being fed.
Nice.
I think we have strawberry milk too.
We do?
We get it Wednesdays and Fridays, right?
I don't remember which day she said.
We should be getting it two days a week. Can you, can everyone or no?
One, Monday, Wednesday.
Not sure yet.
Two days.
Kids happy or?
I think you need to try a little bit, it's one month a week. Better than none.
Oh, you're right, it's one grade level.
But it's better than none.
Okay, is there a reason why, can we not get it? Is it like a shortage?
Yeah, we didn't set up for it at the beginning of the year, so we weren't able to get all of it.
But if they will drink it, then we need to provide it.
Right.
Going in next year, maybe they can have it a couple days. All right, are there any visitors wishing to address the board?
Yes, I do.
Your name, please?
My name's Michael King. I'd like to thank the board for giving me this opportunity. I'm very passionate about special education. About a year ago, I believe, I probably, your superintendent and principal probably received a couple of emails and voicemails voicing my passion on that subject. I just wanted to leave a couple of pamphlets here for the, or some reading material for the board. You may have already discussed this, I don't know, but in March twenty-second of last year, about the time I was leaving you some of those voicemails and emails, the Supreme Court expanded the scope of special education rights. It was an eight to zero vote. And as you all know, in government, eight to zero is pretty overwhelming. Anyway, the rights of special education students in the United States creates a nationwide standard for special education and empowers parents as they advocate for their children in school. Basically, I left you one here on family matters and a more readable one from Atlantic Monthly that you can look over at your leisure. Uh, my granddaughter, by the way, is Emma Kramer, she's in kindergarten here at LaSalle, and she has Down syndrome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, is there a need for executive session? Correct, we need a motion.
Motion to have executive session with student matters, employment, employment conversation, discipline of performance. Our suspending specific employees of the public body collective arguing matters between the public body and exclusive representatives, uh, that sort of party employees, and review of executive session. Minutes from the regular meeting held December twelfth, two thousand and twenty.
Second. Giddens.
Aye.
Gagel.
Aye.
Kevin Reagan.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Brenner.
Aye.
Bailey.
All right, now she carries.